Good evening and welcome to the School Board meeting for District 196. It is August 8th. As we call a meeting to order, would you rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, good evening. We'll ask for approval of the agenda. Board, there are two revisions in our consent agenda under nine, which is employee agreements, and ten, which is an employee agreement probationary. There are technical changes on those two exhibits. Nothing's changed necessarily for them, just two technical changes in the verbiage. So you can note that they will be as revised. So I will ask for approval of the agenda before we move forward.
So moved? Second?
We have a motion by Cory, a second by Joel to approve the agenda as amended or as revised. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote. So Cowden couldn't be with us this evening, so we'll miss him. We'll move into recognitions. He is, we'll be sorry that he missed these recognitions this evening. As I've always, as I always say, this is the time that the board loves the best. We get to celebrate with our students, we get to celebrate with their families, and thank the teams of teachers that have gotten them to their successes. Our first recognition tonight is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Leadership Conference 2022 from Eastview High School. We'll call up Maya Battistone, and she will introduce all of her winners. Ladies, you can just follow up right behind your teacher. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening Chairperson Magnuson, members of the School Board, and Superintendent Krieger. Thank you for inviting FCCLA to be recognized at the meeting tonight. My name is Mia Battistone, and I have had the privilege of advising the Eastview Chapter of Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America since 2006. FCCLA is the only career and technical student organization with family at its central focus. FCCLA prepares students for leadership and workplace skills for college and career through peer-to-peer education, community engagement, and application of skills learned in the family and consumer science classroom. Eastview is consistently one of the largest chapters in the state and the only chapter in District 196. We have held the East Central Area President Office for numerous years and excel in STAR events, students taking action with recognition, qualifying for national leader conferences every year. We are actively involved in giving back and helping our community. Some of our chapter projects include working with Ronald McDonald House, supporting the Warrior 196 5K Memorial, the drawer in Rosemount, and 360 Communities, just to name a few. We do service projects each month. The following students place in the top three of their STAR events at the state level, and the top two in each event qualified for National Leadership Conference this year. STAR events allow students to keep, compete individually or as a team. There are more than 30 STAR events students can choose to compete in, all which recognize participants who demonstrate their knowledge, skills, and abilities to actively identify issues concerning families, careers, or communities, research topics, develop and implement a project, and advocate for positive change. This year, we sent 25 members, grades nine through 12, to the region and state conference, competing in 13 different STAR events. Each member has put an extensive amount of time and effort into their individual projects, and I am so very proud of all of their hard work and dedication that has earned them state recognition. With COVID putting a damper on these things the past few years, we have been able to come back bigger and stronger and look forward to a bright future. It has been a pleasure working with these members, watching them grow, develop, and excel in FCCLA. We would like to thank the School Board, Superintendent Krieger, Michael Bolsoni, Dandy Rick, Bruce Miller, and Rob Franchino for their continual and extensive support of our chapter and the many opportunities that they have helped provide them to be the outstanding chapter that they are today. I am pleased to present the following students. And some of them are not here because of summer break, so I am very glad that these girls, especially ones that are leaving for college, are able to represent us. Andrea Alfaro, Sarvesh Amagunson, Wendy Boateng, Nora Brusco, Stella Bouchard, Kamya Chukavarte, Allison Champ, Miley Marie Charles, Kaia Chernus, Bridget Coyne, Annika Ellis, Riley Hetlin, Seham Abraham, Christine Joseph, Sumitri Kub, Anu Malavaranen, and Avani Marada, Tyler Miles, Himani Mandal, and Abby Ryla. I would also like to say thank you to all the parents and families for the support of your member and our chapter. They have been a vital key in helping us be an outstanding chapter. Please, please stand up and be recognized. In addition, we have other accomplishments at our National Leadership Conference in San Diego this past June. After a year of COVID disruptions, we have come back stronger and have members to applaud in their placing of national STAR events. This year, we had four of our teams and members place in the top 10 in the nation. Two of our promote and publicize FCCLA teams fought for 10th place, with one team placing number 10 by .333 percent, and the other placing number 11. I am also extremely proud of Kamya Chukavarte, who competed in job interview, taking the number one spot in the nation with a perfect score, both at state and national competition. She has been a member for four years on our Chapter Leadership Council and was our Central East Area President this past year. I have worked very closely with her over the past four years, and she will be missed for her enthusiasm, dedication, and hard work. Another one of our bright and upcoming stars is Himani Mandal. She is a ninth grader who placed third in the nation in teach and train. As a first-year member, this is quite an accomplishment, and we look forward to the next three years as she becomes part of our Leadership Council and continues to develop through FCCLA. Thank you for your time tonight.
Out of the ladies that were standing up here tonight, three of them are graduated seniors, and they will be going off to college. We wish them well. Ms. Battistone has been at Eastview since it opened, which is now starting to be a long time. And we thank you so much for bringing that. It is interesting to me that Eastview is the only school in the district that doesn't have an FCCLA component to it, and hopefully watching the success of your young ladies, or it could be gentlemen, too. That we add other ones across the district. As a former HOMAC teacher, or Family and Consumer Science teacher, I know those STAR events and how fun those are. And I think, I think we could, I was telling Mr. Bolsoni, I think we can hire every one of those girls that just came across here, because we've got places for people to help teach and train and public, public presentations and all of those. So congratulations, and thank you, thank you so much for coming tonight so we can celebrate with you. Thank you. The next one on the agenda this evening is Owen Rexing from Rosemont High School. He's unable to be here with us this evening, and so we will invite him to another meeting and celebrate with him. At that point, next up is the Class AA National Speech and Debate Tournament, winners from Egan High School. We'll call up Chris McDonald to introduce our winners.
I feel like I've been here before. It seems like deja vu. Maybe it's just that I see Mary often, I don't know. Maybe that's what it is. All right. We're here tonight to introduce Eric Lee and Archon Sen, who this year at the National Tournament as juniors placed third in the country. I want to first thank the District 196 School Board Chairperson Jackie Magnuson, Vice Chair Cory Johnson, Superintendent Mary Krieger, and the rest of the District School Board members for your support over the years and for honoring Eric and Archon tonight on their accomplishments at the 2022 National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament in Policy Debate. I would also like to thank Egan High School faculty and staff for their support, especially Dr. Polly Rykowski, whose enduring supportive debate activities is a key to our program's success. I would also like to thank my assistant policy debate coaches Bob Grovan and Josh Grovan, who worked tirelessly all season to make sure that we were prepared to compete. I would also like to thank Eric and Archon's parents for all of their support as the team competed at a great number of tournaments. Both of their fathers are here tonight. If they'd stand for a second, we recognize their parents for their contribution. As Mr. Bolsoni knows, as a parent of a longtime debater, it takes a lot of effort and time and energy and support across a wide spectrum of individuals to be successful in debate activities. Finally, I'd like to thank the entire policy debate team at Egan High School, who helped Eric and Archon to achieve their success, because the only way that a team, even though they're comprised of two people, our team is much larger than that, it requires the entire team working together to make certain that we all succeed. So I would like to especially thank last season's team captain Flynn Gray, along with his partner Notu Daniel, for helping at the National Tournament to get Eric and Archon to the semifinal round and taking third place. I want to share with you a little bit about the National Tournament and kind of give you a sense of what their accomplishment was. Out of a field of 163 teams that qualified to compete in June at the National Tournament, from the thousands of teams across the country representing all 50 states, in addition to the 50 states Taiwan-sent teams from the American schools there to compete at the National Tournament, Eric and Archon debated 14 rounds at this year's National Tournament. It's a double-elimination tournament, so you have to keep winning until you've lost twice. They don't lose until the semifinal round, the second time that they lose. They won 28 of their 38 judges' ballots across the 14 rounds to take home third place. During the season, the cumulative record of their season last year as juniors, they won 105 debates and lost 28 debates. They won the MSHSL Section 3 Tournament, the MSHSL State Championship, the Southern Minnesota NSDA District Championship, were quarterfinals at the NCFL Grand National Tournament, and semifinalists placing third at the NSDA National Tournament. That's just the highlights. There are many, many more I could stand here and list for you. Both Eric and Archon will earn academic All-American honors from the National Speech and Debate Association this fall. The NSDA recognizes the very best of their members during their senior year, who maintain a 3.7 grade point average or higher, in addition to earning 750 competition points during their time in high school. To earn those points, you get six points for every win that you get and three points for every loss that you get. So it takes quite a while to get to 750, let alone the well over 1,500 that both of them have earned. All of this is accomplished through hard work and dedication over the course of four years of debating, with one year left to go. They were only juniors this year. They started as eighth graders. They have set loftier goals for this year for themselves to see how they do. I am also proud to present to you Eric Lee and Archon Sen, third place at the National Debate and Speech Tournament in Policy Debate.
We'll see you next year. I asked them what their loftier goal was, and they just smiled. So congratulations. Next, we'll turn it over to the Superintendent for recognition of students and staff.
I'd like to invite Director of Elementary Education Sally Salady to the podium to introduce some of our new principals and assistant administrators at our elementary schools. While she makes her way up, I want to congratulate Sally on being selected for induction into the Bemidji State University Professional Education Hall of Fame. Sally has 39 years of outstanding service to public education, including 30 years at Echo Park Elementary School, where she started as a teacher. In 1997, Sally took over as principal, and she led Echo Park for 18 years before coming to the district office in 2014. Sally works tirelessly, supporting the principals and staff of our 19 elementary schools and cares deeply about the students and the education they are receiving. We are thrilled that Sally is receiving this deserved recognition from her alma mater and are ecstatic that she continues to serve as our Director of Education, and I'm sure she doesn't appreciate us calling her out, but we needed to recognize her tonight. So congratulations, Sally.
Thank you.
And now you can introduce your new principal.
Thank you. All right. Good evening Chairperson Magnuson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. Michael Bolsoni and I are excited to be back to introduce to you this evening nine more amazing educators we are adding to our administrative team. The following quote that I shared at our last Board meeting holds true with each of these administrators, each of these individuals, and is worth repeating tonight. Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be. I am happy to introduce to you the next elementary principal at Northview Elementary and three new assistant administrators to our elementary team. So first, Melissa Griffin, who is the next principal of Northview Elementary School. Melissa was the assistant administrator at Northview for the past three years. Prior to that, Melissa taught at elementary schools in California and Washington for 14 years before coming to District 196 in 2012 as a teacher and interventionist at Greenleaf Elementary School. In 2014, she began working for the district's teaching and learning department as an elementary literacy coach. Please join me in congratulating Melissa Griffin.
My apologies for not being here last month. I was on vacation with my family, so thank you for making this accommodation for me tonight. I want to thank you all so very much. We have a saying at Northview Elementary, "We are small but mighty," and I continue to hold that true, and we will do good work. So thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Next, I'd like to introduce Zachary Gunshereski, who is the next assistant administrator at Northview Elementary School. Zachary is returning to his roots as he did his student teaching at Northview in fourth grade in 2012. Most recently, Zachary was the assistant administrator in early childhood special education, and prior to that, he was a district math coach and a classroom teacher at Rosemont Elementary in grades four and five. Please join me in congratulating Zachary Gunshereski.
I just want to say how grateful I am to be here and for this opportunity, and I look forward to working with Northview students, families, and staff. So thank you.
I'd like to introduce to you Donzel Dixon, who is the next assistant administrator at Greenleaf Elementary School and is new to District 196. Donzel received his bachelor's degree from Michigan Technological University and his master's and administrative degree from Concordia University. Donzel brings a wealth of knowledge and skills from his experience in schools as well as the business world. He has conducted and facilitated AdVid workshops and created and orchestrated the Target Tech Experience, where students from urban areas who were interested in technology come to Target to sharpen their interests and are exposed to STEM. Please join me in welcoming and congratulating Donzel Dixon.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. Being new to the district, District 196 has been nothing but welcoming since day one. I've also had the opportunity to meet some of the Greenleaf staff, teachers, and amazing students, and I'm just excited to see how can I share my perspective and see how can we support our parents, our teachers, and our students at Greenleaf Elementary. So thank you.
Our final introduction for elementary is Ally Puttinen, who will be the assistant administrator at Red Pine Elementary School. Most recently, Ally served as a peer leader in our district for the last four years. She also taught grades one, two, and four at Deerwood Elementary. Besides all of that, Ally is a District 196 graduate, having attended Woodland Elementary, Dakota Hills, and Egan High School. Please join me in congratulating Ally Puttinen.
I'm pretty excited to continue my journey in District 196. It's a, it's a great place, and thrilled and honored to join the Red Pine community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sally. I am here tonight to introduce five new secondary administrators, and we'll start with the middle level. First, I would like to introduce and welcome Nick Vogel to District 196. Nick is a new assistant administrator at Scott Highlands Middle School. He comes to us from Valley View Middle School in Bloomington, where Nick was a dean of students for the past four years. Prior to that, he was a school counselor in Bloomington for six years. Nick is a District 196 graduate. He attended Thomas Lake Elementary, Blackhawk Middle School, and Eastview High School. So we're very excited to have him back in 196. So please welcome Nick Vogel.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Whoa. Thank you so much for being here. I am just absolutely thrilled to be here in 196, a place that I call home each and every day. So excited to work with our students, our families, and our staff. Thank you so much.
Unable to attend tonight are Charlie Kush and Kim Carter. Charlie Kush will be joining the administrative team at Falcon Ridge Middle School. Having served in a variety of administrative roles, from associate principal to interim principal at the middle school level in Hopkins, Charlie has most recently returned to his roots in the classroom, serving students at Valley Middle School of STEM as an English and communications teacher. Kim Carter will be joining the team at Blackhawk Middle School. She has over 20 years of experience working in District 196. She started her career as a special education resource teacher and has been at Rosemont High School as their school psychologist since 2007. She has served as a district-wide leader on many different teams, supporting and leading professional development and social-emotional learning, crisis prevention intervention, and other topics as well. Kim will be joining the Blackhawk Middle School administrative team this fall. And now we'll move on to the high school. We have two new administrators to introduce to you tonight at the high school level. First, I would like to introduce Hussein Araale. Hussein will be joining the Eastview High School administrative team. Hussein has been a mathematics and physical education teacher for 12 years, most recently in the White Bear, White Bear Lake School District, and prior to that, in the state of California. He has served his students, families, and community in many ways, as an athletic coach, a program leader for robotics, a department leader, and a coordinator for school events. He is also an avid and project lead certified individual. Please join me in welcoming Hussein Araale.
I want to start off by first saying thank you for having me. I want to thank Bruce and the wonderful staff for trusting me to be part of the team. Michael, for the warm welcome. I'm excited. I've heard nothing but great news about the district. I just moved in two years ago, so this has been a wonderful opportunity for me that I'm excited to take on. As I said, I am eager to start, and I hope to get to know each and every one of you and the parents and staff and all involved. So thank you for having me.
Next, I would like to introduce Scott Trigasoff. Scott will be joining the administrative team at the Area Learning Center, our ALC. Scott has worked with all levels of students during his 30-year career in education, elementary through high school. He has experience as a teacher, an assistant principal, and as a principal of an area learning center. Scott has contributed to district-level committees and has a strong passion for helping students succeed. Please welcome Scott Trigasoff.
Thank you, Michael. Greetings to some of you on the Board. We've now been able to see each other the first time as part of the Equity Advisory Committee, and with COVID, we've seen each other distance learning, or distance, but now we're here in presence. So first of all, I'd like to thank the Board, and I'd like to thank Mr. Schultz, Schmitz, excuse me, for having the faith and hiring me to take on the role as the associate administrator at the ALC. Today, we met for the first time, and I'm really encouraged and enthusiastic and grateful to have the opportunity to work with the students, Phoenix Rising, as what I understand. And so we'll get together and create an environment where the students can thrive at the ALC. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you folks for an extended period of time.
So as you can see, our future is very bright. We have some really talented and experienced leaders coming to us this fall, and we're very excited about that. So thank you.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for joining the District 196 family, and if you're moving to a different place in the District 196 family, congratulations. We look forward to you sharing your gifts with our students, our families, and our staff, and welcome and congratulations. We're soon off to a great start. Next is items of the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening, we have the minutes from the July 25, 2022 school, regular school board meeting. We have grants. We have the treasurer's report for June 2022. We have personnel. We have pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time employees. We have pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time community ed employees. We have an employment agreement, which has been revised for technical reasons. We have an employee agreement probationary that's been revised for technical reasons this evening. We have catastrophic accident insurance. We have an agreement with the YMCA of Greater Twin Cities for the 2022-23 School Age Child Care Program. We have the 2022-23 Strategic Staffing Solutions Agreement for speech therapists and occupational therapists. And we have the next grad agreement. That's the consent agenda this evening. Is there anything, any Board members would like to pull anything or have questions on this evening? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion in a second. Motion approved.
Second?
We have a motion by Bianca and a second by Joel. Any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote. This evening, we have no items of report. We have no items of new business. We have no item, we have one item of new business. Almost got, going so fast, I skipped right over it. We have one item of new business, and that's the Policy 503 Students' Rights and Responsibilities. And we'll call up Jill Coyle.
Good evening Chairperson Magnuson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am before you tonight with new business, with Policy 503 Student Rights and Responsibilities. What I have for you tonight are essentially three proposed changes. Two of the proposed changes may look familiar to you, because they mirror changes that you made in the spring to our annual overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities book. The other change, the third change, is simply intended to catch up with a new law that the Minnesota Legislature passed in the spring of 2022. So to unpack that for you just a bit, I'll have you look at paragraph 3.6.1. This section contains a listing of potential actions and consequences that may occur in response to student behavior. The proposed additions are intended to better reflect that language that we put into the overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities in the spring. And a note on that, the Overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities handbook is being mailed home to all of our families in the district this week. So expect them, your parents on the Board, expect that to arrive in your mailbox any day now. Moving on, paragraph 3.6.2 contains updates regarding the prohibition of corporal punishment in district schools. And the update there is intended to better reflect the definition that's contained in the Minnesota statute with regard to corporal punishment and that prohibition in our schools, again echoing a change that we made in the spring to the handbook. And then finally, the change made to paragraph 6.2.4 adds limiting language with respect to the administrative review of student use of technology. So this is the change that the Minnesota Legislature made in 2022. The law governing student data was revised in a variety of ways, but one of those ways was to place limits on school districts' authority to review school-issued devices. So the change that you see in this paragraph is really quite limited. It's only intended to reference that new law so that we're compliant with it, and then likely there will be more changes to district regulation to better describe the implications of that law. This is a new item of business. We'll come back to you for a second reading in September. At this time, though, I'm available to answer any questions that you have about the changes.
Are there any questions from the audience on this policy? Seeing none, questions from Board members? This is an item of new business. We'll take action on this September 12th. If you have, obviously, if you have questions, you can make sure you If you have, obviously if you have questions, you can make sure you can get them to Jill and she can answer those questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other action items this evening. So board members and superintendent updates, any board members with items for update this evening? Nope, except I will just mention that we've got kids going back to school for Camp Propel. We're all busy. If you haven't been down, we've always got kids at all of our schools. It seems like every, it doesn't matter what time you go by a school, there are kids working or bands marching or people running. So we're soon to be back in school. I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
Exactly. So in the meantime, I hope everyone is enjoying our beautiful Minnesota summer. We have been very busy at the district office these past few months, preparing for a strong start to the school year, which is just over a month away. Our theme for this year is connect, collaborate, celebrate. We're going to connect by focusing on relationships, our social-emotional health, and making sure every student knows that there are adults at school who know them and care about them. And we're going to collaborate to learn from each other, get better together to improve results for our students. And we're going to celebrate the many great things that are happening in our schools every day. It has been a challenging couple of years and we're ready to put that behind us, make improvements based on what we've learned during the pandemic, and move forward to a future of boundless opportunities and infinite possibilities for each and every one of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the end of the meeting. We'll ask for a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
A motion by Corey, a second by Bianca. Our next regularly scheduled meeting will be right back here on September 12th. With that, all in favor of adjourning the meeting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The meeting's adjourned.